For Monday, May 19th at 3:00 PM. The purpose of this hearing is for discussion and public input on the proposed FY '26 budget. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Commissioner Rawls.
Present.
Commissioner Garrett.
Present.
Commissioner Oster.
Here.
Commissioner Jackson.
Here.
Commissioner Russell.
Here.
Commissioner Hill.
Here.
Commissioner Lee.
Here.
Commissioner Thompson.
Commissioner Fox.
Here.
Commissioner Jay.
Here.
Commissioner Frazier.
Present.
Thank you.
Two members present.
My staff has informed me that we have zero people signed up for public forum. We do not have a list of specific department heads, officials wishing to speak, but I do see several in the audience, as well as our Finance Department. If any commissioner has a question, please feel free to turn on your light. I will begin with Director Caldwell. I don't know how much more you have to say, but we would like to start with you, sir.
Chris Caldwell, 400 Main Street. I think I've spoken enough, so I'll just answer your questions.
I've got Commissioner Fox.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Director Caldwell, I was looking at the, some of these are just general, helping me understand the budget document questions. So I was looking at the detailed revenue document, which is about 100 pages. And a lot of, like, I just picked a page out of random here. This is youth sports, and it has negative revenue listed. And I'm just trying to understand the account, how that accounting works for you.
So negative for us in a revenue standpoint is positive. So if you see a negative number, then it is positive. And so youth sports would be something from Parks and Rec that we are expecting to get revenue from, whatever one you're looking at, that's how much we're estimating for fiscal year '26.
Okay. Well, some of it just seems, I may have to come back, okay, like, okay, like the election So 480 or 515,000 budgeted city in Knoxville, does that mean the city of Knoxville is paying the county 515,000?
So in that particular item, the city pays for their elections. So that's what the estimate is, that their city elections will cost in FY '26. So the Election Commission will invoice them, and they will make that payment based off actual, so that's the estimate.
Okay. And then for the state of Tennessee on that page, again, I'm just kind of going through random pages, but the state of Tennessee, it looks like the county then received $654,000 of revenue from the state, but then in 2026, we're only expecting 15,000?
Yeah, probably 15,000, I think, would be the salary supplement for the director, and so with the administrator of elections. The state will pay for certain elections and not pay for certain elections. So if their amount went to zero, then there's no state-funded elections. We have to pay for our county general elections.
Okay. So, but there are state offices in 2026 that are going to be contested, is that right?
I think what you're thinking about would be probably in FY '27. So in August of '26 and November of '26 would be state elections, which they would pay for, which is in FY '27.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, then debt service, debt service fund, you expect 78.2 million from local taxes. So that's just, you're just saying, this is what we're going to get from local taxes that will be directed towards our debt service in '26?
Correct. Ultimately, that's the property tax amount that the county and the schools portions pay for related to debt service. So that is current property tax, I say, current and delinquent taxes, yes.
Okay. So, are you saying that that's how much of the revenue generated that will be directed to that particular expense, basically?
Correct.
Okay, all right. The, let's see. Oh, what, I just need somebody to explain again for me how the hotel occupancy tax works. I was looking at the statute today, and it said that you have to spend like two-thirds, like, if it's between, if it's below 3%, you have to expend two-thirds of the revenue on tourism. But then if it's between 3% and 5%, there's a different formula. Am I stating it correctly?
You're correct.
Okay.
And we're at 5%, so we're in that upper mark. And when you do the calculation on that upper mark, it turns out being three-fifths or, I'm sorry, two-fifths or 40% has to be for the direct promotion of tourism. Two-fifths have to be for the, I'm going to say this wrong, so give me one second. For the debt, construction, operations, or maintenance of tourism facilities, then the one-fifth that is left is broken down between 10% to the city and 10% to the county. And then those, although it goes to the city and then our park stays with us, have to be for tourism-related expenses. And so everything is tourism-related, but listen, you're correct. It is a confusing statute, because if you're below 3%, it's a different calculation than if you're 3% to 5%. 5% is the maximum that the state allows.
Okay. So two-fifths, 20% for operation of tourism-focused entities, two-fifths for basically capital expenses of tourism-focused entities, and then the other?
Yeah, I think, I would say, two-fifths is the direct promotion of tourism. So for us, that arm is visiting Knoxville. Then two-fifths is for, whether it's debt, construction, operations, or maintenance of tourism-related facilities. For us, we use a lot of that for the East Tennessee History Center. We use some of it for the debt obligation on the new multi-use stadium. And then the Women's Basketball Hall of Fame is a county-owned facility, so we use monies there to maintain that facility. And so that's some ideas of what we spend that on.
Now, with that, I was going to ask you about the Women's Basketball Center. How much revenue does it actually create for the county every year?
Nothing really for the county. I think, yeah, I think ultimately, you know, they generate a report for us about what their expenses are versus their revenue. For us, from just a facility standpoint, it's not revenue generating, but what we do generate revenue from are people who are coming here that are staying in hotels that come to that facility. The county built that facility, I don't, 30, 25, 26 years ago, and so it is a county-owned facility, so we do maintain it. And so we have quite frequent conversations with them about needs of that facility, but we don't generate revenue from that facility.
Do they charge any kind of admission fee?
They do, I'm pretty sure. I've never been, so I can't say that for sure, but I do think if you go, there is a fee. They're saying yes, so I'm going to take their word.
Okay. What, I mean, has there been any discussion about just selling that property rather than? Is there, let me ask you first, has there been any quantification of what owning that property does for the county?
I would say that the previous mayor at one point did have a discussion about trying to sell that property, and then nothing really ever came of it. And I think there's a couple of reasons why. But ultimately, the county back in the late '90s chose to build this facility, and ultimately we basically lease the facility to the Hall of Fame for which they do what they do there. And I don't think the county has ever viewed it as revenue generating, it's more of just a tourism facility to bring people here.
Same thing, the Blunt Partnership, I see we have $31,250 devoted to that. Is that, like, Knoxville County owns a piece of land with Blunt County, is that what this represents?
We own a 25% piece of Pellicippi Place Technology Park, which sits at the very end of Pellicippi Parkway. That $31,000 is air portion of maintenance to upkeep that park.
Is that park gener, I mean, what is your understanding of expectation? And I'm sorry that you got to answer all these questions, because probably some of the people who were here last week could have answered them, but...
No, so ultimately, that park, I think it has been slowed a little bit as we waited for the state to finish Pellicippi Parkway extension. I do think there are people that have interest in that park, and ultimately, once the park gets completely online, it's going to be kind of a multi-use park, there's going to be some commercial and residential to be a part of that as well. Then we will generate, any property tax that comes off that park and/or sales tax, then we get 25% back. And so, but the amount that you see there, the $31,000, is just air portion to maintain that park.
So you keep it mowed and stuff like that?
Correct.
Okay. But there's an expected eventual return on investment on this?
There will be, 100%.
Okay. What, I know that the Knoxville Chamber of Commerce, it contracts with the county to perform certain tasks, and could you just run that rundown real quick for me, what that is?
So ultimately, the amount that you see in there for the chamber, the $1,270,000, is for the, for managing the county's Industrial Development Board and our business parks, and also for economic development. The vast majority of that goes for those first two components. It's for managing the county's IDB and maintaining our business parks. There's $400,000 or so or less that actually goes for economic development, which is used in recruitment and retention of businesses, whether it be, as an example, that we recently saw Greenheck or Beehive Industries or others. That's what that smaller amount goes to. The others go to managing our IDB and maintaining our parks.
Okay. What about the Farragut Chamber of Commerce? Does it contract with the county to provide services?
Yeah, so the Farragut West, and I think the key there is they actually do a lot more in West Knoxville than just Farragut. And so ultimately, we saw a benefit there to help small businesses, so we entered into an agreement with them for that cause a few years ago, and that's what their purpose is.
Are you where Farragut spending any money on that Chamber of Commerce?
I have no idea what Farragut does, I'm sorry.
Do you know, are the people here from Central Hispanio to East Tennessee, does anybody here represent?
No, the nonprofits were here last week, Commissioner Fox, so you could have asked all the questions to them then.
All right, do you, Director Caldwell, do you know what that particular charity function is?
Central Hispanio?
Yes.
So I know they do a couple of things, and so like, one thing that we've discussed is they actually, and I forget the name of the company, but they do help like, related to language access with companies who have employees that maybe are trying to learn English. And so they help companies with employees in that regard. And I don't know for sure what the parent education is, but Jenny Holden, I'm sure she knows much more about that than I do, so we'll let her answer that.
Okay.
And Commissioner Fox, if you don't care, if you're looking at a page to let us know what page you're on so we can follow along, I know you said you're picking and choosing different ones, just so we can follow.
Yeah. Well, currently, I was originally looking at the revenue reports, the detailed revenue reports, which were like, it was about 100 pages. Now I'm just looking at the mayor's budget summary, and I was on page, or actually, I was looking at the, I was looking at the, I'm sorry, the ordinance asking for appropriations to nonprofits, but now I'm looking at the expenditure summary by fund, which is page 14 of the mayor's budget.
Hi, Jenny Holden, 400 West Main Street. The parent education piece of this intro contract that Chris was talking about is it's a program that facilitates workshops with Knoxville County Schools and accepts referrals from the Knoxville County Juvenile Court and the Department of Children's Services. It's a parent education class.
It's basically, it's a class for people that don't speak English, is their native language, is that right?
I would assume that those are the folks that would be referred to Centro, yes.
Okay. Well, that answers, that was from the nonprofit Commissioner Durritt page, but now I'm moving on to page 14 of the mayor's budget. The, I'm looking at the Behavioral Health Urgent Care Center, $840,000, just making sure I understand what those expenses are for. Commissioner Jay may know better, just as well as you, but I just want to understand that.
So the Behavioral Health Urgent Care Center is more for us as a jail diversion for mental health. So it's a, it's a place for the city and county, whether it's KCSO or KPD can take someone that they have taken, before that, they take them into custody, can take them to the BHUC, and it's mental health services that doesn't put them in the system that gets them the help that they need.
Knoxville County, this is on page 15 of the proposed budget, Knoxville County Education Foundation, just wanting a short explanation of the function that that particular expenditure serves.
Sure. So Knoxville Ed Foundation is a nonprofit agency that basically does certain things related to education in the county in conjunction with KCS. And so some of it can be, there's like three or four things that they will focus on. I'm going to look to Commissioner Jay, he's on that board, but I think some are playground related, and there's two or three other things that they're focusing on this year.
Yeah, mostly the work is advocacy work, research. They do a lot of incubator work, so when, one example would be when the education system or an educator in particular has an idea for how to, say, improve reading scores, then they might work with the Knoxville Education Foundation to pilot a program, incubate different ideas, test it in certain schools, see if it works, and then figure out, and make recommendations to see if it's something that would be rolled out across the entire school district. They also do a lot of research and advocacy work for Knoxville County Schools to supplement. They're often described as a critical friend to the school system, so they can analyze various aspects of performance for, in reading math, any number of subjects, and determine, you know, how are we doing? They work closely with Dr. John Reiswick and his team to review the priorities, and then there's about 1,000 other things they do, including the PlaySpace Fund that Mr. Caldwell mentioned, is a temporary project with one-time funding that mostly comes from private sources supplemented by some community or some county support, but it's a project that's going to go away by the end of next year, because it'll be complete. But most of their work, it's very similar to SCORE on a nationwide level that works alongside the state school system.
You said, what'd you say about their work being complete next year?
Just the one project of many different projects is the PlaySpace Fund. That's a project in which Knoxville County Schools for many, many decades had a, it wasn't even a policy, it was a practice of saying that school playgrounds were really the responsibility of the PTOs, PTAs, the communities. And so kids had to fundraise, and parents had to fundraise when they needed a new playground or a set of rusty steps had to be condemned or things like that, in an effort to make sure that kids and parents, teachers didn't have to pay for basic playground equipment. I started a fund that was private dollars that came in, was also supported by the Education Foundation, and it essentially worked to have all of the playgrounds in Knoxville Schools brought up to a level of adequacy, well, really a good level for all the kids to have an outdoor play space. And then once we get those up and all completed, which we hope to be by the end of 2026, then the school district has made a commitment to maintain those as part of their budget and to make sure any new school built has a new playground. So we're sort of riding a 30-year wrong, and we hope that work will be finished by the end of next year. But that's not the primary goal of the Knoxville Education Foundation, that's just one program.
Okay. Next line, United Way Community Schools, Director Caldwell, what is the purpose of that fund?
So that is, you know, community schools used to be funded through Knoxville Ed Foundation. They outsourced that to the United Way, so ultimately, what this funding goes for is just for the community schools, so small school programs, just to keep like, small schools, and I think like Pond Gap's an example of one, there's a couple of more. And so it's programming for community schools, and it's just ran through the United Way.
Tennessee Achieves, that's the next one, I've got a question. Probably won't ask you about all of these, but...
So Tennessee Achieves is just the statewide, two-year free college that is throughout the state, and so air portion goes to help that for Knoxville County students.
Oh, is that like a, is that a state-manded match or something?
No, there's lots of state commitment programming on that, but Tennessee Achieves is really a peer mentoring program and a program in which I served as a mentor for several years. It's to pair up communities from the individuals from the community with high school seniors that are going to colleges that need, so just some mentoring of how do you transition from high school to college, how do you prepare for it? Could be anything from applications all the way to, you know, first year of engagement. It's trying to make sure that those students who want to go to a secondary education program have a little bit of extra wind in the sails from somebody who's been through it before. So it's really a, I would call it more of a mentoring program between the community and high school students.
What's the, I'm trying to get to what the need would be for $100,000 to, is it just people volunteering and saying, hey, I want to help out, and I want to speak to?
No, I mean, it's related to mostly program-related items, I mean, if we, this was briefly said here, but if we had every nonprofit here last week to answer very minute detailed questions, and if you had, if we had given, been asked this, we could go give you a very specific, so it's going to be hard if you, we're happy to, I'm happy to dig into any one of these, but it's going to be very difficult to give you very minute details on what that does right now in the next 30 minutes.
I would.
So we can provide that information, they've been around for a long time.
I would say as well, so one thing that this goes for is this, so ultimately, Tennessee Achieves has to raise money in order to continue to get, to allow students to go to community college for free, so that's kind of what our funding goes to as well, is to allow Knoxville County students who are a part of Tennessee Achieves to go to a community college of their choosing for free.
Okay. Just to, so for Commissioner Jay's point and Madam Chair's point, was the notice any different on this particular, on last week as it was this week? I mean, did it say specifically, this is the time to ask nonprofits? I thought we just had a notice. If I'm wrong, let me know.
You're correct.
Okay, that's what I thought. So I don't understand why people are making a point of that. I mean, well, they could be here this week.
Okay, but they were all here last week, and you didn't ask any questions. And they were all there waiting for every question, to answer every detail.
Right.
And you didn't ask any questions. So if I was them, I would assume you didn't have any questions either.
And you know what they say.
And I think, I think you're going to find some frustration on the commission, only because the Finance Department is available 24/7 to ask, answer any of these questions in detail or to get any of this information. The Finance Committee meeting, we met last week, and anything that you want to know about the budget, we could have tracked down for you.
Right, right.
So I think it's a little disingenuous to like, show up at the zero hour and ask for a bunch of detail. We had plenty of time to do that.
I'm glad you threw me into that briar patch, because I know the city has a budget 15 days in advance of having hours and hours of hearings. And we got this, we got the expanded budget, the detail, just a week ago. We got the budget summary two weeks ago, and I think it's unreasonable, frankly, to ask us to absorb all this information in just a week and then be ready to ask nonprofits questions. I think that's unreasonable. And the city, if you just follow the pattern of the city, they would agree just by their conduct. So that's my response to that. And if the, if the, if the notice is no different, if the notice had said, this is the day to ask nonprofits questions, why would I conform my conduct to that? But no one said that. I thought they're all going to be here again.
Commissioner Fox, we've got some other commissioners that would like to ask questions.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. I'm going to have further questions, but I'm glad to defer for now.
Commissioner Russell?
Yes, I do have, I spoke with Mr. Caldwell about this earlier. I have had several constituents who have asked me about why the budget for the schools has gone from approximately $500 million to $700 million between the year of 2020, 21 to now. So approximately a $2 million increase, which is 38%, while enrollment has actually gone down during that same time. And I know a lot of that is related to the legally required maintenance of effort. If you could just kind of explain that, and I actually have to say that I do agree with Commissioner Fox, that a lot of the questions aren't about addressing each other. Just to be honest, the other 10 people up here are not near as important as the people who are sitting out there who are paying these taxes, and they deserve the answers, and they deserve to hear the answers that Commissioner Fox is asking the questions on. So if you could please do that specifically for the constituents, sir.
Sure. So related to general-purpose schools, on page 12, there is a five-year budget summary that shows the budget from '22 to '26, and you will see that there's about $158 million increase in the general-purpose school funding over that five-year period. The amount of that funding that's related to, at the time, BEP, now known as... The amount of that funding that's related to, at the time, BEP, now known as TISA, is a good chunk of that 158. I mean, I don't have that number in front of me, but that number has definitely increased over those five years. And the other big increase related to school funding in that timeframe would be local option sales tax. So local option sales tax continues to increase or did a lot over the previous three to four years. And 68% of sales tax is collected within the city of Knoxville. And so, now I think if you're KCS, you can make the case that you're entitled to that. And so historically, we have always given growth to schools, and we did from '22 through '25. And so the vast majority of that increase would be TISA slash BEP and local option sales tax. There would be a small amount that is related to property tax. To me, that's what would make up those increases.
I noticed, when we spoke about this earlier, you were talking, something that you said just now was just slightly different. You said that we have historically or typically done that. Are we legally required to do that?
No. You legally do not have to give natural growth to schools. And in fact, this year in FY '26, when we knew we were negatively impacted by the property tax ratio, with the approval of the mayor and the superintendent, we sat down with the Finance Department from schools and we projected what we thought natural growth was going to be countywide, and we split that. And so that's how we get to our number, right? And so we ended up moving two pennies of property tax from schools up to General Fund, which helped to kind of reinsure where we were on the General Fund. But ultimately, we looked at the natural growth as it related to the county, which was approximately $11,000, $12 million. And then we, and then we split that pretty evenly. And I listen, we historically have given them the natural growth. This year, we split it. There's no doubt that if you, if you look at what the state says, nobody is saying that they have to give to get natural growth. What the state says is you cannot supplant, meaning that you cannot lower your local recurring revenue, you at least have to maintain it. Where we are a little different, and I don't think anybody here wants to get into legal battle again like we did like 20 years ago, but ultimately is, there's a vast majority of sales tax that the schools get that come from the city of Knoxville, right? And so, you know, what part of that are they entitled to? We have historically not broken down that by SITUS, meaning that by the county, the city, and the town of Farragut. If you do that, it can change things. I think ultimately, always agreeing on the front end of where we want to be and what we're going to do with natural growth is the right way to do it. And ultimately, there's other factors that contribute to thinking, right? One being, if the schools don't get teacher starting pay to $50,000 a year by next year, then the state can hold funding. So that the governor has put that mandate statewide. Starting pay for teachers at 50K. If you don't hit that, then the state can choose to hold funding. And so when we look at how we're going to do natural growth, that plays into our mindset as well. We've got to get starting pay for teachers to 50, because if we don't do that, then we're really hurting ourselves.
We are going up $25 million from last year. And again, $200 million almost from 2021, the 2020 to 2021 budget. But yet, the number of students hasn't gone up. How is it, I mean, the funding has continually gone up, we're not taking care of more children. And if you take the number of teachers out there and divide it into the $7 million, that's a whole lot more than 50,000. So I guess what is the absolute legal minimum that is required to give to the schools, is the question?
So if you look at what, I think, I'm not getting I think there's a couple of ways to answer that. And so I'll start by, I'm going to give you a couple of answers, not trying to avoid the question. I just think there's multiple ways to look at this, and Ron, you can feel free to hit me if I'm wrong. If you look at how the state looks at maintenance of effort, it's local recurring revenue. So it's not the total budget, it's just local recurring revenue. I think if you, if you say that you, that we cannot supplant and that we cannot go below the amount of that, right? So then, in '25, the budgeted amount of maintenance of effort would be $347,333,286. To me, that is what I would say, is what the state would say is your mandated maintenance of effort. Now, keep in mind, that doesn't include their portion, that's just our portion, right? And so this year's maintenance of effort number that we have in here is $357,292,706. Okay? So you look at that, that's, just call it a $10 million increase. So I think the state would say just on that basis that you're $10 million ahead of where you were a year ago on maintenance of effort. I think that's the simple way to look at it. I think it can be more complex than that. If you look at sales tax from the standpoint of what comes in from the city and the town, if you look at them separate, then schools could make an argument that they are entitled to that. We've never, we've never had that fight or had that argument, but ultimately, I think there's a way to look at that to where you could say, because it's not coming from the county, it's coming from the city and the town, that it's different. But to answer your question about what the state would view as maintenance of effort, I think it's the 347.3, I think is what the state would say.
So we're budgeting $700 million, but we would only be required...
No. You're, don't look at the total number. You got to look at local recurring revenue. We're budgeting $357, the number last year was $347. To me, that is the maintenance of effort numbers when you look at it from a state standpoint. To me, it's a $10 million increase from the state standpoint. And I would say this too, don't oversimplify things. There's a lot more that goes into the school budget than just teacher salary. So you can't just take their number and divide it by 7,000 teachers and think you can get to a number. There's a lot of fixed cost increases at schools and buildings and contracts and things like that. And what was your fixed cost increases this year? So ultimately, there's a lot of increases that Ron was talking about, whether special education, transportation, that go into their budget, that increases every year, debt service, health insurance. And so you can't just look at it and think that it's all going to teacher pay. There's a ton of fixed cost increases that happen every year. So it's hard to think about it from that standpoint. And so I think, if you look at it the way that the state's looking at it, that I think the state would look at it, it's a $10 million increase in maintenance of effort. But ultimately, I think it's more complicated than that for us because of referendums on the ballot in the past related to the city.
So could, so our maintenance of effort is the 347 for our portion of it, but we're budgeting $357, so we've increased it $10 million with no increase in children. Actually, I think if I looked at that right, I think they're actually anticipating a lower enrollment next year.
If I could just interject here, one of the causes that I don't think have just been outright mentioned is that we have had several new schools go online in these last few years too. And, you know, building a school is just the beginning of the cost. Once that school is built, then that is additional maintenance of effort that's also required for these schools. So that, that, well, yeah, but I mean, in the last few years, we've had four that I could count that have come on system-wide. So that's another huge thing that we get on. And sometimes, even though numbers of enrollment might go down, it doesn't mean that the children all live in a geographic area where you can, you know, make that work as far as student-teacher ratio goes. You know, we have some schools that are located further out that have much smaller classrooms. You know, ideally, you'd like to combine those, but there's the geographic barriers don't allow for that type of thing to happen. So again, it's not as easy as just taking the number of kids and dividing it by number of employees. So there are a lot of other things also going into that. And as you mentioned, buses and maintenance, I mean, it's just, it's just like in your own home, the prices that have gone up, it's just unbelievable sometimes. Thank you.
I do see that prices have gone up. I noticed that Public Safety, we had $94 million budgeted for it in the year 2021, and now we have $122, which is only a 30% increase in their cost. 38 for schools, but only 30 for Public Safety during that same period of time, yet enrollment has gone down. But our population and the people that Public Safety is having to service has gone up. In addition, our homeless population has increased, which Public Safety deals with constantly. So they've been able to make it with 30%. So again, I'm wondering how efficient we're being with those dollars, so, thank you.
Yeah, I would say this, from the commission standpoint, you're approving one number, you're approving by the consent decree, a number for Knox County Schools. It's, it's an expense line, right? And it doesn't get into detail because the consent decree says we don't get into detail. We agree on a revenue number, and then they decide at the school board on how to spend it. And so what before you is you'll see in your budget, one expense number related to schools.
Commissioner Frazier?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just in preparation for today's meeting and reviewing back over some things, I just had an additional question that I failed to ask during my meeting with you all. And page 20, it's an expenditure fund, Sheriff's Drug Control Fund. My question is, adopted 2025, it was $603,000, and it's increased to 1.1 million. And this fund is primarily funded from the receipt of fines and costs related to drug enforcement cases. I'm just curious, how much was collected in 2024?
The actual budget in '24 was, it's on that page as well, so $598,765. The 1.1 budget, is there a use of fund balance in there? So in this fund, there is $2.5 million in their fund balance. So they are using some of that money to do the improvements at Wheeler Street where the new impound lot's being used. So that's why you see that big of an increase, it's one-time expenses.
Okay. And then just a general question, with the organized retail crime, the SEAS money that we receive, what fund does it go into? Does it go back into the General Fund?
Allison will have the answer.
Hi, Allison Rogers, Sheriff's Office. The ORC money does not go, it has its own separate account for SEAS, and then once it's ordered to be forfeited, it goes into the forfeited account, which then can be used. So that money does not go directly to the General Fund.
Thank you, Ms. Rogers.
Okay.
Commissioner Lee?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just for the sake of the commission, I'm just not answering these questions just for no reason, but we have over 500,000 people in this county, and they all can't process this budget as quickly as a couple of weeks. And so I've got a question, I think Jenny Holder, Holden, I'm sorry, she answered these questions that some people have been calling me about. And I just wanted to, her to address that on the record so that people would get the answer. And one of the questions was the Catholic charities, if they were helping illegals. Now, I know that speaking with Ms. Holden, she told me that the Columbus, that they help with the Columbus Home Children's Shelter, and I totally support that. But I would like to ask, do we know if they're helping illegals in any way? That is the question I've been asked.
Catholic charities in general? I can't speak to what they do as an organization overall, Commissioner, but I can say that the funding provided by Knox County is solely used to support Columbus Home Children's Shelter, which takes in children that have been removed from their households due to neglect or abuse.
Do we, do we get a list of what the nonprofits are spending the money on?
Yes, we do. We have quarterly reporting that is required of every nonprofit that is funded through this program. And then we have a program manager that reviews that, and then our internal staff accountant looks at all of the programmatic expenditures before reimbursements are approved.
Would that be something that the commission could get those reports?
Sure.
Okay. I would ask if we could. And another question that has come up is, the United Way is a huge nonprofit, but they sit at the table of where, who gets the money. Can you explain that?
We did ask someone from United Way to serve on our review panel. It's one person out of a much larger review panel, but with United Way, they receive a ton, or they provide a ton of grant funding to organizations that are working here in our community. It's particularly helpful for us to have their perspective on our review panel, especially when we have organizations that apply to the county for the first time, having them at the table. Sometimes a nonprofit will say, we work closely with United Way. Being able to ask them the question of, hey, do you work closely with United Way, really helps us when we're reviewing applications. And one of the things that we look at is whether or not this organization has the capacity to do the work that they're asking for funding and support of. And it helps to have United Way there because oftentimes, they have already funded these organizations.
So would United Way have any input on whether you should have... So would United Way have any input on whether you should help one particular nonprofit or another? Do they get to say yes, no, or vote on that?
No, no, they just get to score. They are a single score in the application scoring.
Okay, so they're not like saying you should help this one or not help that one?
No, not at all.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for answering my questions.
Commissioner Fox.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Okay, Director Caldwell, I would like to continue. Well, my next question has to do with the county code. I was looking at Section 2-553 of the county code, and that's in division, that's in Article 8, Finances, Division 4, Receipt and Disbursement of County Funds, Budget Procedures, Section 2-553. It says, "The budget of each department or agency shall set forth the numbers of employees, deputies, and assistants, the salaries of each such employee, et cetera, et cetera." Aren't you all supposed to provide us this detailed information according to Code, Section 2-553? Of each, we're supposed to get the name or job title of each such person, person by salary schedule, applicable to all such positions funded in such budget?
I'll go back and, and research that. What we do have always done is, beginning on page 27, is a county budgeted position count. So you can see by department, the number of employees in the proposed budget versus what was in the, the previous adopted budget, and, and the change. And like always, if anybody wants to see any detail, whether it's salaries or, or whatever, we, we can easily get that to you. But ultimately, what we've always done in these, in our budgets, if, have put a, a position count, and then if you need additional information, we provide it.
But you're saying it's not, it's not being provided in the budget itself?
No, I think what you have before you is a proposed budget summary. There is no doubt that in the budget itself is the detailed budgets of, of all employees.
My next question is, some of these may be appropriate for Director Holden or the Health Department Director, but you may be able to, these are kind of general questions. Indigent assistance, do you know what that fund is used for?
I can give you a summary, but I'm sure that Kevin can give you the details, so we'll let Kevin.
Okay.
Kevin Parton, Knox County Health Department. The indigent care program is a taxpayer-funded program that provides primary care as a enrollment service. It's a payer of last resort. We are also obligated as county to pay for the healthcare of inmates, and so every inmate inside of Knox County is also claimed to be indigent.
Is that, is that Department Number 1015120? Are those the funds that you're talking about right there?
$2.9 million roughly.
No, this is $220,800. So it, this is, this is titled indigent assistance. This is on page 15.
That's our funding for CAC. It covers pauper burial and some other programs at CAC. We break out their funding into its, into a, a couple of different accounts. And, but the big, the, there's a small piece for, for pauper burial, and then indigent assistance related to, what are you pulling that up?
What, what page on the budget summary does that?
15.
Commissioners, we do have beer board at 4:00. I'm gonna extend this until 4:10, but I'm not gonna have the constituent that's here to apply for beer board to wait much longer than the 4 o'clock start time.
We'll get you a detail on that, but ultimately, it's, it's indigent assistance. So it's helping indigents that are a certain classification at CAC, which could be related to mobile mills or other programs that they provide.
Okay, but this is, this is a CAC?
Correct.
Yes. Fund, okay. Now we may be getting into Director Parton's field. I have some questions about preventive health services and dental services. Preventive health services, could you just briefly explain that for me?
Yes, sir. It provides immunizations, new board screenings, things of that nature.
Is that, how, how does a person qualify to receive these services?
You just come into the Knox County Health Department. We take insured, uninsured. Depending upon your qualifications, you may qualify for, if you're a child, there's a federal program, vaccine for kids. If you're an uninsured or underinsured adult, you would qualify for what's called the 317 program.
Are these, is this service provided through Knox County facilities, or do we contract out to other providers?
We do those inside of our facility. There are other providers that offer those services as well, inside of the county.
So the answer is both?
Yes.
Okay.
Now, we do monitor the VFC and the 317 through a grant program, the immunizations program. We actually monitor that for the entire county.
Okay. Do, does Knox County take any precautions to ensure that only citizens are receiving these services versus people who are in the United States in violation of the immigration laws?
So vaccinations, as well as STI services or STD services, are actually protected for all, all individuals inside the United States under a federal code. Those would be the only two that we can provide to anybody that seeks services. If you want to come to the Women's Health Clinic or another clinic that we might have, you would have to provide proof of residency. We also use a program through immigration itself to verify your immigration status.
Okay. So you, you do take precautions to try to limit?
Absolutely. All day, every day.
Yes. What about dental services?
That is, you're required to be a Knox County resident, and we do verify with proof of residency.
Well, now, could, but somebody could be a resident and still not be here lawfully under the immigration laws of the United States, though, is that correct?
I, I would, I would assume so, yes.
Yeah, so is there any distinction, any action taken to ensure that only people who are here lawfully can?
Sure, you have to provide identification to do so.
Okay. Does, but does that identification state whether or not somebody is, you know, a lawful resident of the United States?
Yes, it would be a state issued. We also do take various immigration paperwork, green cards, if you're verified through the other immigration services.
Okay. Now, what about if, I mean, if somebody presents, because it's my understanding that people, illegal aliens can actually acquire a state-issued ID, a driver's license of sorts, I don't know if it allows them to drive, but they can get something that identifies them. Now, would that be adequate, or would Knox County say, no, I'm sorry, you, you can't receive these services?
If you provided a state of Tennessee-issued ID, as well as proof of Knox County residence in two forms, then you would qualify for services.
So really, there's, what you're telling me is there might be a little loophole where somebody who resides here can get these services even though they're not a lawful resident of the United States?
That would mean that they were able to receive a state-issued ID.
Okay, all right, thank you. Knox County Medical Program, I'm just trying to understand all these different distinctions. There's a number of different programs under your purview.
Yes.
So we have, we have those two, preventative health, dental health, we have community health, and we have Knox County Medical Program. So just those last two, community health and Knox County Medical Program, how do those?
Sure. The Knox County Medical Program was the program that I was explaining to you before that provides primary care for the very underinsured, non-insurable individuals. There's a max limit of 1,100 people that are allowed to be on there. We partner with Cherokee Health to provide primary healthcare services. And then all of our local hospital systems also agree to have a discounted rate for these individuals. We are also bound by law to pay for the healthcare of inmates, and we do that through that program as well.
Through the, the community health or the Knox County Medical?
Knox County Medical Program, yes.
And so which, what's the difference, what is community health, though?
Community health, they, they harness the programs of healthy weight, maternal child health, tobacco cessation, things of that nature.
What about women's health services?
Yes.
What is that?
That would be your basic women's health, primary care, OB-GYN visits. We have a breast and cervical cancer prevention program that runs through that program as well.
And again, that's just for people that are not, who don't have insurance, basically?
Yes, we take insurance as well. I bill insurance.
Okay. But again, with the, with all these programs, if somebody can get ahold of a state ID and they, they certify that they're a Knox County resident, then they'll be eligible to partake in these?
Not necessarily. The women's health program by contracting through the state of Tennessee, it requires us to check immigration status through immigration website.
Okay.
Yeah. And then also through like the Knox County Medical Program, we partner with Equifax to verify residency, income, things of that nature, because it's income-based.
Okay. So there are some, some programs, like, it, it sounds like there are extra precautions taken, but some there aren't, maybe? Is that, is that a fair way to put it, as far as checking immigration status?
Well, it depends upon if you, if immigration status is, is an issue. So like I said, for the, for those protected by law, then we, we do not go through that process.
Okay.
Commissioner Fox, we've got another commissioner would like to ask a question, and we will be discussing the budget during the meeting, so if you have other questions. Commissioner Russell.
Yes, I actually wanted to compliment Mayor Jacobs. He has fulfilled his commitment to keep the property tax rates from increasing, and in this time when so many politicians don't do what they say they will, I want to commend him for that. We, I'm probably one of the, the first people that speaks up when I see something that is not correct, but I'm also probably one of the first people that's gonna speak up and say, hey, you've done something right. You actually kept your word. So I like to be, take the, take both sides. I like to, to give compliments, and also when I see something that's not right, speak up about that, too. And I think that's important, that we always keep in mind to say the positive when we are giving the bad side, and what we see that, that isn't correct. And, and that's what makes us a civilized society. I will have some additional questions later on. I do think that we do need to look at maybe reducing some non-essentials. We need to look at taking that money and paying toward the debt. I think education is important for the youth, but I also think leaving our society in a situation where we don't have a lot of debt for them to have to pay is just as important. And so I'd like to look at that a little bit further. Also, I'm, I'm gonna go ahead and let the, give the, our, the commissioners do notice that I do plan on requesting that we give up, because I think it's important for us to set examples, that we give up our 55,000 of discretionary funds that we get. We each get 5,000 a year that we can give to any charity that we want. But if we're gonna expect other people to do the right thing, we need to start with ourselves. So I look forward to continuing the conversation.
Mr. Parton, I just wanted to let you know how much my district is enjoying the new building?
Oh, great.
And the new parking. It is packed over there, and I have gotten quite a few constituents today text me to let me know that it is awesome over there.
Great, thank you.
So I wanna thank the clerk and the trustee's office, and then you guys for getting that over there.
Absolutely.
So thank you very much.
It's quite the team effort.
It was a very good team effort. All right. I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
A motion on the floor by Commissioner Frazier, second by Commissioner Durand, all in favor? Aye, all opposed. The ayes have it.